Welcome to the May 2nd, 2022 Select Board Meeting. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, as amended by Governor Baker on February 12th, 2022. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board and commission members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards the quorum. This meeting is broadcast live and recorded on Eastern Community Access Television, which is Comcast 98 and Verizon 23, and on ECAT's website at www.eastencat.org. This meeting is closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer, you'll see a CC button at the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching from an electronic device, please pose any questions on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal, and please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jennifer Stacy.
And Dottie Pulginetti. Thank you. And for the minutes, Select Board Member Jamie Stebbins is not going to be available tonight. So the first item that we have on the agenda is every year at this time, we go through and we reaffirm the Select Board Statement of Values, Ethics, and then last year, we created a Statement of Equity and Inclusion. So Craig, I know that this takes a little bit of time, but I think it's really important to read the Statement of Values, well, all three of them. So I don't know if you want to read them all, Craig, or if you want to spread them out?
Oh, I think we should spread them out. I'd be delighted to read the Statement of Ethics. And then if Mark and Jennifer want to read the others, that's great.
Terrific.
So do you want to start with the Statement of Ethics, or do you want to start with Values, or?
Let's start with the Statement of Values. Jen, do you want to read that one?
Absolutely. Do you need me to read the date study, or should I just start with the actual statement itself?
No, just with the statement is good.
Okay. So Town of Easton Statement of Values, the Board of the Board of Select Board adopted September 13, 2004. And then there are several dates. The last reaffirmation was June 7th, 2021. And the values are as follow. Protect and enhance the financial health of the Town of Easton. Protect and enhance the educational excellence offered by the Town of Easton. Protect and enhance the historic nature of the Town of Easton. Protect and enhance the professionalism of the Town's staff, boards, and committees. Protect the environmental quality of the Town of Easton. Enhance relationships and communications. Emphasize long-term strategic planning. Protect and enhance a climate of acceptance and inclusion within the community of Easton. Protect and enhance housing opportunities for the residents of Easton.
Great. Thank you very much. And the Statement of Ethics? Craig, are you going to read that one?
Sure. This is a Statement of Ethics of the Select Board adopted originally on September 13th, 2004, amended and reaffirmed June 7th, 2021. A member of the Select Board in relation to their community should: A. Realize that their basic function is to make policy with the administration delegated to the Town Administrator. B. Realize that in creating and enforcing town policy, the Select Board may direct the Town Administrator in setting priorities that affect policy, but that the day-to-day operation of the town are left to appropriate department heads. C. Realize there are, that they are one of a team and should abide by and carry out all board decisions once they are made. D. Be well-informed concerning the duties of a board member on both local and state levels. E. Remember that they represent the entire community at all times. F. Realize that service on the board is service to the community and not service for personal or political benefits. G. Abide by the ethics guidelines established by the state. Number two, member of the Select Board in relation with the Town Administrator should: A. Endeavor to establish sound, clearly defined policies that will direct and support the administration of, for the benefit of, the staff and residents of the community. B. Recognize and support the administrative chain of command and refer complaints to appropriate members of the administration. C. Give the Town Administrator full responsibility for discharging their duties. D. Refrain from instructing or requesting assistance from Town Department Heads. Instead, all such activities should be handled through proper administrative channels to the full board and the Town Administrator. Number three. Member of the Select Board in relation with a fellow board member should: A. Recognize that that action at official legal meetings is binding and that they alone cannot bind the board outside of such meetings. B. Refrain from making statements or promises regarding the outcome of matters that will come before the board until after having a full and fair opportunity to weigh the merits of an issue during a board meeting. C. Uphold the intent of executive session and respect the privileged communication that exists in executive session. D. Make informed decisions. E. Refrain from communicating the position of the Select Board to reporters or state officials without proper board approval, prior board approval. F. Be respectful of other board members and their opinions. Number four. A member of the Select Board in relation with Town Staff should: A. Treat all staff as professionals with clear, honest communication that respects the abilities, experience, and dignity of each individual. B. Limit contact to specific Town Staff. Question of Town Staff and/or requests for additional background information should be directed only to the Town Administrator, Town Council, Assistant Town Administrator, Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, or Department Heads. The Office of the Town Administrator should be copied on all requests or correspondence. C. Never publicly criticize an individual employee. Concerns about staff performance should only be made to the Town Administrator through private conversation. D. Limit requests for staff support and ensure that all requests go through the Town Administrator's office. And E. Ensure that any materials or information provided to a select person from a staff member be made available to all Select Board members.
Thank you, Craig. That's a long one, but I think it's important for people to, in the public, to understand how the board operates. And, you know, I've heard in the past, somebody say, you know, everything's got to go through the Town Administrator. I think that it's important that people understand that this is the way that we stay efficient, because a lot of times, people will reach out to each of us individually. And if we don't know that this is already being worked on, and five of us are going to five different department heads, and the next thing you know, you have, you know, you're taking up all of this important and valuable time instead of streamlining the information, and you get a much quicker response that way and more efficient and more effective. Another thing that's not on here that people may want, may, you know, question is, when you send an email to the Select Board, or the School Committee for that matter, it's typical that the Chair responds rather than all five individual members, but the members are copied on it, and a lot of times, I'll have in my signature that although I'm responding on behalf of the Board, the Board does see all the correspondence. So that's not to say that you can never reach out to an individual member, but just if you only, you know, sometimes I see someone say that, well, only one person got back to me. That's, that's why. So I think, you know, this board's very professional, and I think that we've really done a really good job with this over the past several years. So the last but not least is the Select Board Statement of Equity and Inclusion, and Mark, if you would like to read that?
Sure. The Statement of Equity and Inclusion of the Select Board adopted June 7th, 2021. The Easton Select Board embraces diversity, equity, and inclusion as a core value of its work. As leaders in our community, the Select Board will stand together against discrimination of any kind, foster an environment that is welcoming and inclusive, intentionally seek out volunteers from underrepresented groups to serve on boards and committees, promote and celebrate diversity, champion equity, and cultivate inclusion, welcome all residents to have a voice in community decisions, create policies that recognize and value the needs of all community members. The Select Board recognizes that a thriving and vibrant community is made up of residents, businesses, and activities that include and welcome everyone.
Thank you, Mark. And that's, that's our newest statement that we did last year, and we spent a lot of time and thought on that. And I think that it's, it's great to read those all at this time.
Dottie would, or be willing to?
Should we take a vote to be?
Yes, if you, you could do a slate of all three, if you wish.
Would somebody like to make a motion to affirm all three statements?
So move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
And Pulginetti, yes. Okay, next is the annual town meeting. Just an announcement that the annual town meeting is May 16th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at Oliver Rams High School. It's in the auditorium, as usually, at 100 Lothrup Street. The warrant for the meeting is available on the town website, and hard copies of the warrant are available in the town offices. The next item up is a public hearing for design, a design public, I'm sorry, I'm skipping the wrong ones. The, the next one is a notice of an upcoming design public hearing for corridor improvements on Washington Street, Route 138, including intersection improvements on Elm Street. That's going to be on May 12th, 2022, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. Mass DOT is going to host this live virtual public hearing. And all interested parties, there's a link in the packet, and there's also advertising and a link on our social media and the Town Crier. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to become fully acquainted with the proposed Route 138 corridor and the Elm Street Intersection Improvement Project. So I'd urge people to attend. We've been waiting for a long time on that, and I think it's going to be really interesting, even if you don't live in that area or work in that area. So the next item is the timed event. This is a public hearing for National Grid and Verizon for poll petition. Craig, if you want to read the public hearing notice?
Sure. The Select Board of Easton has licensing authorities. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing by remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, May 2nd, 2022, at 6:00 PM to consider and act on a petition of National Grid and Verizon New England to relocate one J.O. poll on Center Street, beginning at a point approximately 160 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Center Street and William Street, in accordance with the petition for Plan Number 305, 33051, dated March 9th, 2022, as shown on file with the Select Board Office.
Okay. So Connor, do we have anyone here to talk about this, or?
My staff is saying yes. Let me, there's, we actually have 30 attendees, so I'm going to try to navigate through and see if I can identify someone. If somebody is here from National Grid, if you could use the raise hand feature, we'll move you into the panel. There we go.
Good evening. Can, can you hear me?
We can, but you're echoing significantly.
Okay, one second. Let me just make sure. Yes, hello?
Hello.
Yep, is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Sorry about that.
So this is relocating a poll, it says, out of a customer's driveway?
Yes, that is correct. Pierce, that, that poll was, it's being requested that we relocated. If I'm not mistaken, that road just recently got paved, and we've had incidents where the pole got hit multiple times on both the left and the right side. So neighbors have requested that, if we could relocate that pole approximately 30 feet south, and I think it's roughly around 160 feet north of the adjacent street there.
Okay. And David Fields, our Director of DPW, says that there's no objection to the relocation, provided that the concrete sidewalk is properly restored at the old pole location. So you'll take care of that?
I believe that's already been, been done, if I'm not mistaken. From what I was told. I'd be happy to, you know, go by there tomorrow. I'm, I'm filling in, and I believe the pole has already been moved and relocated, if I'm not mistaken, and so that road should have been already paved. Or that section of that sidewalk should have been already paved. If not, that is something that we can, we can do.
Okay. Mark, I see you nodding, and that's in your neck of the woods.
Yeah. It says, to relocate J.O. poll on Center Street, beginning at approximately 160 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Center Street and William Street. Do you mean Main Street? Because Center and Williams do not intersect.
I think it's the, the paper road for Center Street Rear.
Okay.
If you, if you pull, there's a map attached to the poll petition. It's page 22 of your packet. And you could see that it appears, it appears that National Grid has a paper road for Williams at the intersection, which is at 70, in between 66 and 70 Center Street, which would be Center Street Rear.
Okay.
That's where it is.
And that is two different streets for, you know, Center Street Rear and Center Street.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
I do see that, that there is a question, a comment there stating that the pole hasn't been moved, so. Yeah.
That appears to be from, from an butter. So as, as just as a reminder for the public and the board, we, we send a copy of any poll relocation petitions to all of the butters of a proposed movement. So that, thank you to the Partingtons for letting us know. Traditionally, they would not have been moved yet. That's what the petition is for. So thank you for letting us know that.
All right. If there's no other, let me just see if there's any. Okay, so we've got some affirmation that the pole has not been moved. Are there comments in there? So thank you for that. If there's no other comments or questions from the board, if we can get a motion to approve this petition?
I move to approve the petition from National Grid and Verizon New England, poll petition number 305, 33051, at Center Street, to be moved.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
Genetti, yes. Okay. Next, we have an application of Mahat Raj Corporation for a new Section 15 off-premises package store, alcoholic beverages license for premises situated at 25 Robert Drive, Unit 30, Easton. Connor, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure. I believe the corporate principal.
I'm sorry. Craig, do the public hearing notice first.
Sure. The Select Board of Easton has licensing authorities will hold a public hearing by remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, May 2nd, 2022, at 6:00 PM to consider and act upon the application of Mahat Raj Corporation for a new Section 15 off-premises package store, all-alcoholic beverages license for premises situated at 25 Robert Drive, Unit Number 30, Easton, Mass, with a plan on file at the Select Board's office.
Now, Connor.
Sure, thank you. So attached in your packet, you'll find the customary state ABCC application materials. So as a board, we'll recall from May of 2021, the board, in advance of the Decennial Census, voted a special act request on the warrant, which was then voted by town meeting voters and sent to state, state legislature, state legislature to adopt. That got done in January of '22 by the state, and we've worked with the applicant to bring forward this application for a off-premises, all-alcohol license in the Big Y Plaza, and we, this has been reviewed by all town departments for comment. There is no concerns, and we would recommend your approval. We do have the corporate principal, Krishna Patel, here, if there are any questions for the applicant.
Sure. If the applicant, can you turn on your video and your audio so that we can?
Hi, sorry, is, I'm actually out right now, so I can't turn on the video, but I have my audio on, if that's okay.
Sure.
Yep, and my, I'm sorry, my lawyer is also on here. His name is Ian, sorry, she should be on here, Ian Hedges.
Thank you. We're promoting Ian now.
Thanks.
So Krishna, we just wanted to give you this opportunity to tell us a little bit about your business, so the people at home know about it, and, you know, what, where you're going to be specifically, and just a little, a little quick promo about what you're going to be doing.
Sure. So the store's name is going to be Liquor World. I have been in the liquor industry for over five years now. My father is in the same industry, so I took work with him. And it is not my first time owning a store. So the practices and stuff are very established. If you guys have any questions for me, I can answer them.
Sure. Craig, any questions from you?
At this moment, no.
Mark has none, and Jen?
No.
No. So I guess what, what we want to do is, first of all, welcome you to Easton, and thank you for choosing Easton to, to bring your business. And also to remind you that we are a college town, and we do have compliance checks two times a year. In that case, it would be that somebody would come in and try to purchase alcohol without an ID. If you don't guard them, that fails the compliance. So we really hate to have our businesses come back before us again for non-compliance. Just want to make sure that you are aware and that your people are fully trained.
No, no, of course, yeah. Everyone in the store will be tip-certified, of course, all the time, including me. We check IDs very thoroughly. We have a multi-step process for that.
Okay, terrific. Well, with no other questions, Craig, if you'd like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve the application of Mahat Raj Corporation for a new Section 15 off-premises package store, all-alcoholic beverages license for premises situated at 25 Robert Drive, Unit Number 30, Easton, Mass.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
And Pulginetti, yes. Congratulations, Ms. Patel, and we look forward to seeing you do business in Easton.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. And Attorney Hedges, thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks, everyone.
The easiest one that you've done all week, right?
Exactly.
Okay, next up, we have a few one-day liquor licenses. So the first one is Jack Myers, a Luke Jackson Benefit and HR Solutions. They have applied for a one-day beer and wine license for the Luke Jackson Benefit and HR Solutions event to be held at 9 Sullivan Ave, Northeaston, on June 22nd, 2022, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. An Easton Police Detail is not required for this event. Jack Myers is here.
I am, yes. Hi, Dottie.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Thank you for having me. We're really excited about the event.
Terrific. So this is a private event?
This event is in partnership with the Metro South Chamber of Commerce, Chris Cooney and his team, and the Children's Museum of Easton. And we felt having the Business Networking Event there, it's such a wonderful venue. And coming out of the pandemic, I think, just re-energizing the museum and getting folks perhaps acquainted with some of the changes that have happened, the space is beautiful. And so it's a good opportunity to bring business together at the museum and, and enjoy the evening. It's June 22nd, Wednesday, from 5:00 to 7:00. So the weather at that time of year is going to be spectacular, and we're in downtown, we're in Northeaston and Northeaston Center. So we're, we're really looking forward to it. A lot of interaction happens with the business owners and business representatives. It's generally a lot of fun, and we'll have a raffle. We'll have past hors d'oeuvres and table hors d'oeuvres, and we'll have limited amounts of beer and wine.
Terrific. Well, the Metro South Chamber is, plays a valuable role, not just to Easton, but for the region, and their events are always really great with a great opportunity to meet new businesses. So for, if there are any businesses out here watching and you're interested, we're very lucky in this region to have the Metro South Chamber and the local Easton Chamber as well. So great resources to reach out to for new businesses. So with that, Craig, if you would like to make a motion?
I move to approve the Benefit, Luke Jackson Benefit and HR Solutions, 9 Sullivan Ave, Northeaston, Mass, June 22nd, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Second, Lamb.
With Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
And Pulginetti, yes. And congratulations on a, a great event in advance, and maybe I'll even see you there.
We'd love to have you. Love to have all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Have a great night.
Okay, next, we have two for Brian Maderos. The first one is an annual Father's Day barbecue. He, Brad, has applied for a one-day all-alcohol license for a club fundraiser, which is the annual Father's Day barbecue at the Eastern Rod and Gun Club, 112 Howard Street, Easton, Mass, on June 19th, 2022, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. An Easton Police Detail is not required for this event. And then the second one is the annual summer clamboil, at the, also at the Eastern Rod and Gun Club, 112 Howard Street. And that is August 27th, 2022, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. An Easton Police Detail is not required for that event either. So Brad, welcome to our meeting. We can't see you or hear you. Brad may be having some trouble connecting, but usually, when, when he is here to talk about this, it's a really great, oh, there he is. Hi, Brad, you're still on mute. Nope, still on mute.
Bottom left of your screen, Brad, there's a, there's a microphone.
Looks like he's on his phone, which might be.
Oh, he's on his phone? Oh, okay.
Guessing, that type of movement, it looks like a phone.
Well, you've got your hand raised. You're getting closer to the audio. All right. Well, while Brad is having technical difficulties, I don't want to put you on the spot any longer, but it is always a great event up at the, the Eastern Rod and Gun Club, and they do this every year, so they're familiar with, familiar with it. So Craig, if you want to make a motion?
Do I make a motion for both of them, Dottie, or one at a time?
Make a motion for them one at a time, first one.
Okay, so I move to approve the annual Father's Day barbecue fundraiser, the Eastern Rod and Gun Club, 112 Howard Street, Southeaston, June 19th, 2022, from noon until 6:00 PM.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
Stacy, Stacy, Jennifer?
Did you hear me? Oh, she's jumping out again.
All right, now I'm freezing. And Pulginetti, yes. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties.
It's a wonderful thing. We, I also move to approve the annual summer clambait request at the Eastern Rod and Gun Club, 112 Howard Street, Southeaston, August 27th, 2022, from noon till 6:00 PM.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Pulginetti, yes. So that's unanimous. Thank you for being here, Brad. Sorry, we couldn't hear you. Okay, and next, we have for Stone Hill College, Helen Berkowitz of Stone Hill College has applied. Okay, and next, we have uh for Stone Hill College, Helen Berkowitz of Stone Hill College has applied for a one-day all-alcohol license for the Lions Club Celebration of Easton Community Service Event to be held in the Petite Atrium at Stone Hill College. An Eastern Police Detail is not required for this event, um that is gonna be held on May fourteenth, from eleven AM to eight PM. Craig, you wanna make the motion?
For eleven AM to eight PM, I didn't Okay, um I thought the
Sorry, I'm sorry, it's, that's not right, it's May fourteenth, I don't think it's eleven AM to eight PM.
No, it's not, it's from five-thirty to to nine, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think
We can double-check the, I I don't have access to the permit system offhand, but um given it it's before your next meeting, so I I can check with staff quickly if you wanna hold on it. Uh but if, I mean, Stone Hill has their own police department, I'm not overly concerned of it being used in an abusive manner, um but we typically You say twenty?
It's the hours, so it says eleven AM to eight PM, but it's five-thirty PM to nine PM, so we just wanna make sure we get the hours correct.
Well, why don't we table it till the end of the meeting, so we I, we just don't have, we can't access that right uh the second, we'll take a look.
Okay, that's fine.
So the an, and the next item up is the annual junk license renewals. So we have applications for renewal of the junk dealer licenses for Emporium of Retro and Interesting Collectibles, South Shore Gold and JD Enterprise. Um all of the renewal requests, um there's no, no challenges or problems with any of them. And uh those are uh collectibles, gold, and other uh unique gifts, it always is a weird title to call them junk licenses. So um anybody have any questions or comments on these?
Just a question, in the in the application, I know we've done JD Enterprise before, but I I'm not sure what exactly they do, the other two had explanations about their businesses, but JD, I should have asked this probably a couple of years ago, but do we know what JD Enterprises is, Connor?
Not off the top of my head, but they, people, as Dottie mentioned, with this license type can be engaged in a variety of resale, some folks use it for jewelry, some folks use it for uh vintage vinyl and video games, others use it for consignment, uh but I I'm not intimately familiar with that and uh the Assistant Town Administrator is much more familiar with uh our licensees, but he's running Citizens Academy uh right now.
Okay. Okay, so do you want me to to do all three together um as a slate, Dottie, or individually?
You can approve all three of them as a slate, correct, Connor? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I I move to uh approve the annual junk licenses, license renewals for the three uh on the slate.
Second lamb.
Barger and lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb slate?
I'm sorry.
It's, all right.
Barger slate, I'm sorry.
Stacy slate.
And full genetti slate, thank you. Okay, next, um we have discussion and vote with the intent to award contract to furniture fixtures, award a contract for furniture fixtures and equipment and informational technology, F and E slash IT vendors for the Blanche A. Ames Elementary School as outlined in the PMA memo dated April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And that's based on recommendations from FFNE Consultant Point Line Space. Walter coming on?
We do, uh this probably seems deja vu because you voted on part of this uh a week ago, and this is the uh second tranche of those uh furnitures, fixtures, equipment and information technology. Uh and I believe, Walter, correct me if I'm wrong, this is just authorizing another uh tranche of vendors off of a pre-approved state bid list that are highlighted in uh yellow with a little red squiggly line around it. Um, is that correct?
That is correct, and uh the only, the only uh amendment to that I'd like, I'd like to make is that the uh our our point line, Point Line Space, the F and E Consultant, came back Friday afternoon and adjusted two of them, and I'd be more than happy to share my screen and and show those two, it it adjusted two of them, and and I can show you exactly where they are and and the dollar values that changed, um if you guys would like to see them. Um I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna write another memo and have everyone confused, um but I can certainly adjust it, but I will share my screen and show you the adjustments. So you can see here for RDC, we had a contract award recommendation from Point Line Space for a hundred and thirty-one thousand fifty-four dollars and seventeen cents. The adjusted value, and I'll make a other change live for you, is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand two eighty and seventeen cents. And then the second uh change was to WB Mason, WBM two, uh original was three eighty-nine oh eight, and the adjusted was three forty-five seven oh eight. Um and these adjustments were due to uh some incorrect grabs, uh they're, they were running through those state contract lists and put two, two of the more expensive prices and adjustments in in the other uh columns. So what that did, uh it increased the award amount on this round by twelve thousand and twenty-six dollars. Uh so from around nine hundred and eleven thousand to nine hundred and twenty-three thousand. Um but happy to take any questions, like uh as Connor said, it um is really in relation to what uh this board approved last week, and uh it's only for the um contracts that are highlighted in yellow and uh squiggly lined in red as well.
Okay, so the, so, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this a little bit. So we voted to transfer up to nine hundred thousand dollars, so there and, but there was another transfer in there as well, right?
I was not at that meeting, I don't believe there was another transfer.
No, so at um uh the meeting last week, Dottie, there was, there was a dual vote, but one was to increase the allowance by nine hundred thousand from two-point-one to three million, and at that time, uh if you look, actually, the spreadsheet has it here too, if you look at the FFNE and IT, you see award date filled in for four twenty-five, so those are the doc, those are the contracts um uh that were awarded as the second vote a week ago.
Yep.
So that's what that two-part vote was, and then tonight is just the the uncommitted ones, and then Walter, is this the remainder of what we believe to be the FFNE?
We will, no, we will likely have um a little bit more on the FFNE end, and we'll also have a little bit more on the IT end as well.
Okay.
But this is the, I would say this is the bulk of it at this point.
And is your anticipation that of uh there, you have a remaining three seventy-five thousand uncommitted, that that's sufficient for what is coming? Or would you, would we, it would be that plus additional soft contingency for that purpose?
No, the remaining uncommitted, I believe, would cover what we are um expecting
Okay.
To have.
Okay, so this, this is just the intent to award the contract to the, for the furniture fixture?
That, that's correct, Dottie.
Okay, any questions from the board, Mark?
Uh yes, I do have a quick question, um Walter, I know, I talked to you early when I did the tour, and I understand getting this on order is really important um because of the inflation and and prices going up, so when do you think you will have the remainder, uh when will you be coming before us to ask for the remainder?
If I had them right now, I wish I could bring them to you guys right now, I'm hoping that within the next month, we will have them, um it is really uh so, part of it is items that were not bid, so our vendor, our, our consultant is chasing pricing at this point in time. Um for some items that weren't bid on the furniture end, and then on the other end, it was um two items that we were under the impression were carried in the general, general contractors bid, unfortunately, they weren't, it's for monitors. Um but those items were not, so we are making sure we get them under the IT, that was the only reason we had any additional IT, so I hope by June first to be, before June first, to be back with you guys one more time for a round of these.
Okay, um I do have one quick question, it's more of a logistical question, so um I think it's great that you're ordering this stuff with the lead times uh before, you know, prices have already increased, but before they increase more, um because it's not coming down, but when, when you place these orders, do you also place them um with a, with a scheduled delivery date, or do you have to store all this material?
No, they, they have, uh when, when these contracts and when these bids go out, there was a front-end document that went out with all of them, with a delivery date of uh October fourteenth to November fourteenth. Um so they, they know when they can begin bringing the product in, and they know when they have to be done bringing the product in by.
Great, great, well, that's, this is great, uh locking in these prices now is what we want.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, if there's no comments or questions, uh I'll take a motion to award the contract of the furniture fixtures and equipment.
So moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. All right, and the next one is the discussion and vote, Blanche A. Elementary School, Great Builders Project Change Order Number Seven. So we have a change authorization log.
Absolutely, yep, absolutely, and I'll, I'll, I'll run through uh where we're at as of uh May second, twenty-twenty-two, and with the execution of Change Order Seven, almost fifty-four percent of the contract timing level lapse, fourteen point five percent of owner contingency will have been expended, and twenty-three point two percent of owner contingency is held in reserve for known risk and pending resolutions. Um so again, still in great shape uh on the contingency end for the project. And uh per usual, happy to run through uh a great one, which is only uh seven items this time. So, let me uh, seven PCOs this time, within Change Order Seven, totaling an amount of uh forty thousand dollars, uh four hundred and tw- forty thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Uh first PCO was a clarification to exterior details on the building, um ASI twenty-one and RFI three oh one, uh these were combined. Um, I think most, most of the group knows that in Massachusetts and on these construction jobs, um you are tied to a basis of design, but in the construction contract, you are required to put three equals. So the contractor is allowed to find his best pricing based on those three equals, uh whether that is the basis of design or not. And unfortunately, some of those products, uh those, those details do change, these are associated uh uh for the waterproofer for the building, um and again, in relation to windows and additional sealants that were required. Um we, we've hit a couple of these previously, on these changes, and I I think we're gonna, I think we're, we've still been working through quite a few of them. Um but this is for additional sealants and windows at uh various locations, I believe it was over a hundred and twenty different locations where the sealant uh and ABB was required. Um, we did get this price down to forty-nine hundred and forty-nine thirty-nine and thirty-three cents, so that was the first PCO. Uh second PCO was a chase wall kitchen hood, UDS, um this is uh T and M for the uh time materials for the uh mason and the plumber, um during coordination, um and in the, specifically in the kitchen along the rear wall where the hood was going, is placed for the kitchen equipment, um in the coordination process, uh Fernando Arugio, our plumber, had lines that ended up needing to come down from the mechanical room uh to get to the kitchen. Uh they weren't called out to come down there, but due to the coordination process, which is where the contractor runs through the entire building and pretty much routes all of the HVAC, all of the ductwork, all of the plumbing, all of the um fire protection lines. Um they did get relocated, um and unfortunately, they, where they fell was right behind this hood, uh and you couldn't attach the hood, so we needed to put up this uh masonry wall to basically build a chase for these pipes, uh so that was nine thousand fifty-three dollars, it wasn't shown on the drawings for the mason, so it was a full add for them. Uh next item was RFI two sixty-three, a underslab rainwater leader was missed, uh and this was uh on the coordination drawings, we did grab it, but it was uh unshown, not shown work for the plumber as well, uh that was uh fifteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh the next piece was uh PCO eighty-five, this is for a chair rail. Uh and it says increase from two inch to three inch, but that is a material upcharge to go from a chair rail that was two inches to three inches. The reason for that is, again, the three equal clause, uh the tile in the building, um basis of design, I believe, was a fifteen-inch tile, the tile that uh was submitted on and ultimately approved was about a uh three-quarters of an inch smaller. So when it got to the top from the floor, uh there was a gap between that two inch, but there was a gap between the, where the uh chair rail wants to be. So to eliminate that, um the TRC believed it would be a great, I mean, and it, it actually looks really great with that three-inch chair rail. Um but to cover the gap between the tile and where the chair were, chair rail would be set at that four foot or five foot height. Uh we need to increase the material thickness there, so that was pretty much throughout all the corridors in the building, uh thirty-two hundred dollars and seven, thirty-two seventy-nine forty cents. Excuse me, uh PCO ninety, uh this was uh due to RFP thirty-seven, request for pricing thirty-seven, um where in the dry sprinkler room, there was no electrical or or fire alarm called out, it is necessary in that room, uh that was forty-seven hundred dollars. Uh PCO ninety-five was a constructability and long-term maintenance um issue, so we had uh veneer located, uh wood veneer, panel veneer, uh and we replaced it with, I'm sorry, the brick veneer, and we replaced it with the phenolic to grade easier to remove, easier to clean. Um and that was a thousand, one, one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And then PCO ninety-seven, uh this was uh mirrors due to RFI, RW O two mirrors due to uh RFI three twenty-nine. Uh the mirror glazing, it's gonna be on the porthole windows and some of the lower, the pre-K and K classrooms uh needed to be changed, it was not going to work for the design intent, um so we did take a small credit for what was owned, um it was an application of film on the windows. Um but instead, we're going with a thicker glass panel, um that has the feature of that back, uh the feature of the film instead laid into it. So that was a twenty-one hundred dollar, twenty-one fifty-six and seventy-three. And that is the total of all the PCOs for Change Order Seven at this point in time, and happy to take any questions from the group.
Any comments or questions, Mark?
Uh it's more of a um, just to take a step back, is that we have a, we have a captive audience tonight, and um I know we we go through these, this is number seven, but if you could just share with the audience or, you know, refresher, um because when you say we have twenty-three point two percent owner contingency held, uh we're fifty-three point six percent through the project, we look at it, we say that's great, but could you explain to, to the people at home what that means and why that is great?
Yeah, absolutely, let me uh jump back to my, to my list. Um, so the reason that that's the owner contingency expended being at fourteen percent, we're well, well through the way of the project. Um and really, the, the, one of the largest unknowns that we have left would be taking down the old Parkview School, which is part of the contract. Um obviously, and on any uh a type of unforeseen conditions could, could exist there, but it's the demolition, but um usually where you see a lot of your um big construction change orders, and and this project was, you know, one in the same, it it is when you're coming out of the ground, when you're digging your footings, you're digging your foundations, you're getting the site prepped. Um so to be only fourteen, fifteen percent uh through the contingency at this point in time, when you're um out of the ground, we have a weather tight building, we're into finishes. Um we have the rooftop units delivered at the site and on the building, um that's a great uh, great thing to have. And then the twenty-three point two held in reserve for known risk pending resolution. Um PMA, along with uh the town's designer, Perkins Eastman, are constantly reviewing these change orders uh in attempts to get the most fair pricing, the most equitable pricing, and that's not to hurt contractors, um or general contractors or subcontractors, but it's to make sure the town of Easton is paying a fair price for the um scope that was not shown on the drawing, scope that changed uh while in the field, and that the contractors receive a fair price as well. Um so we carry the most exposure that we know about, uh until they are negotiated down to less. So if you were to combine both of those, we would be uh thirty-seven percent through owner contingency, if all of that known risk, which PMA always um likes to remind everyone, the known risk is always higher than what we would ever expect to be paid for, but we have not spent um the same percentage of what's left on the contract, um while there's also very little building to put back up, to put, to put up, and just a building to come down, so we have more contingency than time expended, time left. So we're in a very, that's why it's a great position. So we have more contingency than time expended, time left. So we're in a very, that's why it's a great position.
Thank you, Walter.
Yep, no problem.
There's no other questions. I'll take a motion to, um, approve change order number seven in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents with great builders.
So, so moved, Barger.
Second lamb.
Barger, lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
And full genetti, yes. So it looks like we are done with the school questions. So thanks, Walter, for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Okay, next item, we have the Department of Public Works talking about the Depot Street Tip Project Update and the Civil War Monument Relocation.
Sure. So DPW is brought in. Dottie, just to give a bit of a refresher, and we also have folks from, uh, our contractor, uh, RJV to just talk a little bit about the stage of the project. I think, uh, Dottie, you may be the only one who was here when we started having design hearings for this project, uh, almost ten years ago. Uh, one of the key and early things that came up was the fact that to appropriately realign and, uh, signalize Porter Center and Depot that, uh, the Civil War Monument would likely have to be moved. And so, uh, that process, there were some preliminary designs presented back then, and, and we went through various iterations of design over the twenty-tens. Uh, and obviously, uh, construction has been ongoing now for over a year. So this year's work will include, uh, moving the monument. Uh, folks have likely seen the, the wrapping go up. Uh, and we wanted to, uh, bring DPW and the contractors in to just talk a little bit about it, because obviously it's a significant historical monument of a community. Uh, and so we made sure to invite and, and folks, uh, there are some folks here in attendance, um, uh, representatives from a historical commission, uh, the planning department. Uh, our deputy director of Health and Community Services for Veterans Affairs, as well as, uh, the leaders of, uh, uh, the Legion of VFW. Uh, so, um, gonna finish moving our contractors in.
Adam from RJV and Peter from United Stone.
Great, thank you. Uh, there we go. And, uh, Greg Swan, our assistant, uh, town engineer is gonna take point on giving this, uh, presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Greg Swan. I'm the assistant town engineer over at Public Works. Uh, joining me tonight are David Field, he's the director of Public Works, Adam Squatridge. Uh, I did it again, Adam. Adam from RJV, he's the superintendent onsite every day for our Depot Street, uh, reconstruction project. And Patrick Garrett, his subcontractor for United Stone, uh, he will be the subcontractor responsible for moving the monument. Um, this time I'm going to start our, just a little update. So this is an update for the monument relocation on Depot Street. Uh, just a little background, the Civil War Monument, uh, was unveiled in eighteen eighty-two, uh, to honor those who fought from Easton in the Civil War. Again, as Connor said, thank you very much. It's located at the intersection of Center Street, Porter Street and Depot Street. Um, the location of the monument makes for a very, uh, poor traffic design, uh, creates a lot of problems. It's a very poorly, from a traffic standpoint, as anybody will attest, if they're trying to make a left-hand turn onto Depot at four o'clock in the afternoon, something I do every day. Uh, it's a very difficult intersection to, to traverse. Uh, again, we started this design, uh, you know, eight, nine, ten, eleven years ago, when we first started with this. Um, and Beta has gone through the permitting process and they came up with the redesign of the intersection. Um, this is what it will look like when it's said and done. We will realign the intersection into a proper four-way intersection. Fully signalized, fully actuated, will improve vehicle safety, pedestrian safety, bicycle safety. Uh, if you can see here in the middle, middle, um, this red triangle here is where the, uh, monument is located currently. And we're shifting it ever so slightly to the southwest. The question is how are we gonna do that? So you've seen the scaffolding go up and there's a lot of questions being raised. Um, it's pretty straightforward. We're going to du- catalog, document, and then protect all of the pieces. We're gonna take the monument down to a laydown area, which is located adjacent to the new proposed location. Um, once the monument has been relocated, uh, it's gonna be, uh, i- in the laydown area. RJV is gonna come in, reconstruct the intersection, um, and construct the new pad area for the monument. Uh, when everything is prepared, they're gonna, United Stone will come in and, uh, reconstruct the monument in its new location, facing the current direction that it's facing right now. Uh, and then any dings or chips or cracks will be repaired. And, and that's it. It's, it's a very straightforward process. Um, I know RJV and Beta and NASTU, you're going back and forth on shop drawings and metals right now, just to make sure everything is safe. Um, not just for, uh, the, the citizens of Easton, but also for the monument. Um, and at this time, I'm gonna open it up to questions to anybody from the select board or, uh, any residents, uh, who may have an interest in what's going on out there.
Sure. Well, we, we have a question that came in at the beginning of the meeting from Teresa. She's the commander of the American Legion Post Seven. And she was wanting to know the status and the timeline. So, uh, what would be the estimated timeframe for when these moves are gonna happen and, and be reconfigured?
Uh, the last timeline that I saw was the end of May, beginning of June.
That's when it will start?
That's when you will see, you, it, that's the, yes, we will, and we will publicize that to anybody who wants to come out and watch from a distance. Not to interfere with construction activity. Um, but we will let everybody know through the town crier, uh, through social media saying we expect to move the monument on these days. Um, you know, to give everybody a heads up. Uh, we don't have it locked in yet because we're still waiting final approval from the state. Uh, this is their second go around with shop drawings and we should have it shortly.
And how long will it take to, A, um, construct the road in the reconfiguration? And then, um, to get the monument like actually put back together in the right location?
For that, I will have to defer to Adam and Patrick.
Uh, we are anticipating reconstructing the intersection in the later half of the summer and constructing the new pad in area around the same time, so probably August, um, and then hopefully resetting the monument onto its new pad this fall.
So then Greg, it sounds like there's kind of three seasons here, right? One is to, uh, disassemble the monument and, and put it in a, a safe laydown area, which is end of May, early June. Then, uh, the intersection shift, the actual change to geometry of the road is later in summer and then closer to Labor Day would be, uh, uh, resurrecting, uh, the monument, uh, in its, in its new spot. Is that accurate?
That, as of right now, as we know how construction timelines go, that is the best guess that we have.
Okay.
So from an overall project standpoint, um, RJV would like to have as much done, and that includes having um, as much of the roadway paving and, uh, roadway winding and have as much done before, um, Thanksgiving this year, when they have to shut down on November fifteenth, that, this would include that intersection piece. Um, so it's, it's in their best interest to have this done by the end of the summer, um, as quickly as possible.
In our best interest to have it done while school's out also because, uh, you know, we definitely want, want that. Um, any questions from the other board members? Mark?
I have a question. Uh, so this might be a question, uh, for the historical commission, but, um, where? When, once the, the monument is placed in its new location, will it still be facing the face of the monument? Facing the same exact direction? Because, um, that's really important.
Yes, Mark. It, yes, it's, it, it has been communicated fully to the contractor and to their subcontractors that the monument will face in the same direction it is currently facing in this photo.
Great, thank you.
Dottie, could I, if, 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 uh, no one else on the board, I, I'll wait till the rest of the board has, has, has gone. If there are any other questions?
Nope, looks like you're good to go.
Uh, so my question, I suppose, is for Patrick, uh, because I've never moved a, uh, multi-ton monument. Um, says eighteen pieces, so it's, how does that work? I mean, so it gets, I assume there's already eighteen pieces. It gets taken apart and moved very, very, very carefully. It's reassembled. Um, what, can you just speak about your experience with, with doing, uh, eh, this type of work? And, and what, what does one do to very carefully move a hundred and forty-year-old monument?
Uh, Connor, that's a, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Yeah, that's, that, yeah, th- those are all great questions. Um, you know, first of all, a little bit about who I am and what I do. Um, I'm a pro- senior project manager with, uh, United Stone and Site. I've been with them for ten years, but I've got thirty years of experience uh, in the stone industry. Uh, primarily, uh, I'm based out of Berry, Vermont, which some of you may know is kind of the, um, stone capital of New England. Um, and I've been involved in civic memorials and big, uh, infrastructure projects for thirty years. We were the firm that took apart and put together the Longfellow Bridge recently. Um, I'm involved in a lot of nine eleven memorials in New York City. I just did the, uh, Boston bombing memorial, uh, uh, I'm at the, on Boylston Street. So, um, um, you know, this particular monument, um, is just a fascinating example. I'm kind of a stone nerd. So stop me if I go too far. But one of the things I really enjoy is to find out what the stone is, where it came from, who made it. Um, and what are the pros and cons to that? You know, this is a particular example of what we call Westerly Granite, which was a quarry in Rhode Island. Uh, it's one of the finest grain stones, uh, in North America and I think in the world. Uh, absolutely a phenomenal, phenomenal material to carve. So, you know, the workmanship in this is just jaw dropping from my perspective. So, you know, all that being said, I don't know if, uh, I don't know if Adam, uh, sent to you guys. You know, last week before we put the scaffold up, you know, we, we use a professional firm. Um, I just did this at the Watch Houston Reservoir because I'm taking part of the reservoir part this, this season. So we came out with a, a professional firm and we fly, uh, each one of these with a drone, uh, to give us an idea of what it's gonna look like, what it does look like, what its current situation is, and to help us identify anything that might be, um, you know, off kilter. Um, and to also help us document. We actually believe that it's twenty-three pieces, uh, not eighteen. We believe the columns to be individual pieces. Um, y- you know, so we're, we're thinking it's either twenty-one or twenty-three pieces. I, I have to go back through my notes and check. Um, because we noticed, you know, the columns are individual pieces. Um, we've taken apart a lot of these, we've put them back together. Uh, you know, this monument has withstood, you know, hurricanes, it's withstood a lot of things. And believe it or not, it probably is just most likely sitting there together held by mostly gravity. They didn't use a lot of metal pins, uh, because they didn't have stainless, uh, material at the time and sta- and, and pins would have just rusted. So these are probably pretty carefully put together. You know, on the specification, it called out mortar, and there isn't mortar in this. There's what's called a setting compound that's been used in monuments. You know, for the last hundred and fifty years. And when we first came, you know, with Adam and with Matt to really review it, we found that that was in fact the case. You know, a mortar joint would be, eh, eh, you know, a quarter of an inch or more, and you would have had to, you know, redo this over the years. We don't believe that anybody, or at least in the last seventy years, has probably touched this monument. So, you know, that being said, then we have to get to the part of taking it apart. We put up the scaffolding, uh, our first order business is gonna be, and we are working with, um, other carvers. I work with a lot of carvers in Vermont. Um, so we're right now, uh, going back and forth with some of my other uh, Silva, Silva and Mativier in particular, Ryan Mays, who's kind of the, uh, guy who knows most about Westerly, uh, is a carver in Vermont. And we've been going through a di- couple of different pick plans, particularly for the statue, um, because it's just such a remarkable piece. And if anybody's really taking the time to look at it, you know, you can still see the US Army, you know, on his satchel on the back. You can still see the polished stars. Um, that's pretty remarkable. The saber is a very fragile point. Um, can, can you guys still hear me? All right, my screen just did something. So, at any rate, we're going through a couple of different versions of the pick plan. Oh, there's the, these are some of the drone photos, uh, that we flew. Um, so we believe that he was lifted and put in place at the elbow location. Um, this is a fairly common, uh, Civil War statue in, in the sense of his, uh, makeup and design. And we feel that that's kind of where the pick point will be for his, uh, for bringing the statue off. You know, that being said, I'm assuming that the town doesn't have a set of drawings of how this is put together. And so as we begin to take it apart, one of the most important things is we'll have a crane position where we're only lifting it, mm, spinning around and setting it down where it's gonna be for the time being. So that the, one of the most important parts of this process is not overhandling these. Um, to make sure, you know, that, that can lead to, uh, some potential damage. So, um, as we take it apart, uh, it's a little bit of forensics, uh, and it's just being very, very careful. This is not a production situation. This is having a crane, uh, doing it right. Uh, putting a little bit of pressure on the statue, figuring out where our relief points are, figuring out how we have to relieve it. Uh, if there's something we don't like, we stop, we go back, we re-figure. Um, so, you know, we're pretty, uh, we're pretty thorough with this kind of thing. So, um, and then, of course, we will document and give each piece its own number, its own measurement. Its own, um, and I'll put that together on an Excel spreadsheet as we take it apart, which will accompany pictures of each piece. Um, so you guys will get a report of what we find on each piece. Um, and then we'll, at once it's apart and we take it down, then we'll begin the, uh, repair process. Westerly Granite is no longer quarried, but there is some of it available, um, particularly through Ryan Mays. We just did a project in Quincy. Um, where if I need any Dutchman or small repair pieces, um, I'll get those from him or have him do them. Um, just to make sure that they're, you know, sculptor quality when they're finished. So.
That was great.
Very reassured, um, having a, a stone nerd, I think as you put it, uh, somebody who really has that great attention to details. This is, uh, you know, probably one of the most prominent, uh, statues that we have in our town. It's very important to our community and especially important to our veterans. Um, and to know that it's being handled with care and to hear that level of detail is very reassuring. Um, that it's gonna be handled respectfully and, um, safely. So we really are, uh, grateful to have you as part of the team, Patrick and, and Adam, uh, to make this whole process go through seamlessly. Any other comments or questions from the board? I don't see any questions in the Q and A from, uh, from the public, so hopefully we've answered all your questions.
You have, uh, Tim Hurley's hand is raised. And so is Greg.
So, Tim, are you gonna bring him in or have?
I can have you, eh, if you'd like.
Sure, why don't we move Tim in?
Hello?
Hey, Tim, you have a question?
Hi, guys. Yeah, hey, Patrick, um, have you identified any damage as of yet?
Uh, yes, we have. Um, and I'll give a report on that. We found some chips. Um, we've noticed in the second stone up that we believe there is a, uh, naturally occurring crack.
Right, right.
That, uh, you know, it's probably something, an inclusion in the stone, not a structural defect. You know, we've noticed, interestingly, Tim, you know, this monument has, I think, either been hit or something occurred where I believe it was probably hit from the west end and it's kind of moved a half an inch. Have you noticed that?
I know a police cruiser hit it many years ago.
Is that what it is? Okay, we, you know, that's a testament to, uh, what a remarkable statue this is because, uh, you know, something, something big hit it. So that's interesting. I'd love to know more about that. Um,
And I, and I know another cat that has, so it's been hit by, I don't know if a car would move it, but anyhow. So I'm curious, but the other thing is, is there a, a, a barrel on the rifle that snapped off? It, you know, it's, it's, it seems to stop at his hand, which wouldn't be normal, I don't believe.
You know, I'd have to, I'd ha- I'd have to investigate that. I mean, I think that Adam is sharing the, uh, photos from the drone. And I also have, uh, the, uh, photos from, uh, when I was first out there.
Greg, can we pull the drone loop back up, please? Yeah, I think that's a, a great question from Tim, uh, not just for, um, you know, for curiosity's sake, but when this is moved, you know, we wanna, you, you, and I'm sure you do, Patrick, want to be able to, you know, point to little defects or cracks that were there before this project.
Absolutely.
Right?
That's a great question. Um, I'm not sure about that. We have to, I guess we'd have to investigate that when we're able to see. And with the stage enough, we certainly probably could at this point, you know, see what's going on on the, on the top of his right hand to see if that might be broken off or if his hand is at the barrel level. So.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Tim. I'm really excited about this because one of the things that's important also is because it's gonna be moved, people will be, actually be able to look at it. And although we as select board members have marched in many parades that conclude at that area, there's a lot going on and I've never actually, while I've been close to it, stopped to really look at it and admire it. So having it moved off to a center, uh off-center to the side of the road there, um and put some, you know, beautiful landscaping around it and have people actually be able to go up and see it and view it and honor it is, is really gonna be uh nice. And then for anybody who's ever taken their um young person uh in driver's ed around that corner, it's gonna be a lot um less scary to do that because that's when you know how bad that area is, is when you're white knuckled uh with a young driver trying to trying to explain to them how to get through that. So um, I guess the only other thing that I'll mention is, so obviously that area is gonna be um, you know, have a lot going on. So the Memorial Day Parade is usually in, in that area and concludes at the monument. But this year, um the, the parade is Monday, May thirtieth. It is going to be um, at, the parade begins at one PM. Um, people that are marching arrive by twelve-thirty and the parade route begins down at Washington Plaza, which is where Corfino's is. And then it goes up to the center and then um to the Veterans Memorial Park. So we invite everybody to come out and honor our um veterans and remember those that have uh served our country. And um next year, it's gonna be a, a whole different look for the parade, so it'll be exciting to um, to see what this looks like when it's done.
Hi, can I ask Patrick another question, please?
Sure.
Patrick?
Yes.
On the reassembly, are you gonna use pins or are you gonna mimic how it was fastened together before with the slurry or whatever you wanna call it?
Well, that's a great question. I mean, if we feel that, you know, if there's a, a crack or a defect that we think might require a stainless repair, you know, we often um depending on the type of repair, depending on what we find, you know, any pin would probably be to help strengthen an individual piece. But, you know, realistically, um, you know, this monument was designed to hold together the way that it is. I don't think it calls for having it be pinned together. Um, and we probably wouldn't unless we felt it needed to be, you know, structurally. The, the joint setting compound, which we've done a submittal on, has been made, you know, basically the same way for the, I think since like nineteen or eighteen eighty-three or something. It's just, it's just hard to beat. Um, you know, it's not something that requires maintenance, so we certainly, uh if there's a stone, if there's an individual stone that needs a repair, we may likely do that. And um, you know, Adam, even though, you know, this wasn't clearly defined in the spec, which it wouldn't be because uh, you know, Mast DOT has um approved epoxies, approved pins, approved processes for repairs. Um, and we would be using, you know, any of the products that we would use for repairs would be, you know, Mast DOT approved products.
But, but, so have they approved this mixture that you, that was used, you know, in the eighteen hundreds? Is that part of their approval?
Uh, we've submitted it. Um, I know that, you know, we've submitted it and uh Adam and Matt have it submitted. Um, the, the firm, it's, you know, it's kind of interesting because the firm is Granite City Tool in Berry, Vermont. And they literally, they don't even operate with computers. They still have hand ledgers and these old kind of things. So when you ask them for a submittal, they kind of look at you funny, but uh, they've done it. We did a couple uh sculptures in uh Quincy, uh at the new Quincy Adams Park uh two years ago or three, I believe, and we, we put those uh beautiful new monuments together with the same material, so it is, yeah.
It's, yeah, you're not gonna reinvent the wheel here. That's, I guess I'm asking is, it's tried and true and you'll stick with it.
We, we'd be hard to improve on what they did.
Okay, okay, cool.
Thanks, Tim. If you have any other questions, uh feel free to send them to the board. We'll get those over to Patrick. And uh the same with any, anybody else that's uh on the call or anybody in the public. Um, if you wanna learn more information, just shoot us an email, selectboard@easton.ma.us. And uh we will get those questions answered for you. So, we're gonna move Tim back into the attendees. And um, we are gonna conclude this part of it if there's no other questions. And thank you for being here, Adam and Patrick. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, we look forward to this. I appreciate the opportunity, so it's gonna be a great, great uh thing for the town of Easton, so thank you. Everybody, have a good day.
You too.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Adam.
So next we have the DPW um uh presentation of the Wayfinding Working Group Report. Is DPW is uh doing that correctly, correct?
Yep. Randy, is Randy Collins here?
Yes, we're promoting him now.
Thank you.
So Greg, I, I don't know, is there background on this? I don't wanna eat into your presentation as far as the establishment of the committee or?
I, I do have a little bit in just how we got to where, just a timeline of events to where we are right now and just kind of give everybody an update and where we're going. And when we know more, we'll let you know. So, Randy, are you here? I see you're still muted.
I'm here now.
Hi, Randy.
Hello.
So, um, moving on, this is our update for the White, Wayfinding signage update. Last year, at the end of our Main Street reconstruction project, um, we wanted to add some wayfinding signs to the northeastern village corridor. Uh, unfortunately, the town of Easton doesn't have a comprehensive or cohesive wayfinding plan, a standard sign that we could use uh to implement throughout uh all of the attractions that we have over in northeastern village, be it Oakames Hall, the Free Library, um, any, even parking spots. It's all kind of a hodgepodge and a mix of signs. So Beta, who was the town's consultant for the project, we brought Randy on board. He's their head, the landscape architect, uh to come up with a master plan for wayfinding signage for the town of Easton. So we could have a cohesive, comprehensive signage plan for this area. Uh, this project is funded by the uh Mass Works Grant for Main Street. Uh, the select board last year appointed a working group. Uh, I'm not gonna go into each individual person who was assigned, but as you can see, it was a cross-section of town staff, boards and commissions and residents. Uh, we met once a month with Beta and they would take our, they, they did some research, uh and they presented us with some ideas. They would take our input into, into, take our questions and our answers and take it under consideration. And they would pare down and pare down, and you can see here, um, this is our final design logo that is going to be the feature centerpiece for the wayfinding signage. Uh, Randy, if you could please uh discuss this just a little bit, um, just to bring everybody up to date on how we came to what this particular logo means.
Sure, thanks, Greg. So when we start these projects, the first thing we uh look at is how to make the signs, the wayfinding signage uh family, unique to the community. And one of the things that we like to do is uh research on the history, culture, uh look at other wayfinding signs or other logos within the community and uh then come up with a wide variety of approaches. Um, we, through that process that Greg mentioned, we sort of whittled down to um, two major components that were honored to be recognized. First was from the history of Easton, uh being the east end of the Taunton Track, um and then finally named Easton and spelled the way it currently is spelled. The compass rose that you see the four points on is, has the east one highlighted. Uh, then also recognizing some of the history, the aim shovel uh factory. Uh, that was sort of a straightforward, as you can see it as well in this. Uh, that, we try to sometimes have to guide from some options to other options just because of readability. But at the end of the day, I thought the, the group um had great questions and we considered uh well over a couple of dozen main themes uh in the signage and finally landed on this one.
And taking that information, uh Beta was able to come up with some renderings of what our signage is gonna look like. Uh, we have gateway signs for when you cross into Easton from any one of our neighboring communities. Uh, welcome to Easton. Uh, if we're going somewhere, a destination sign in the lower left-hand corner, where, you know, these would be displayed prominently at DPW, fire stations, police departments, all of our major destinations. And then our directional signs, uh directing us to areas that we wanna go to. The Children's Museum, Oakham's Memorial Hall, Borderlands State Park, etc. Um, at this point, Beta has prepared a master plan for all of the signs across all of Easton. Uh, they are using that as a representative guide uh to prepare seventy-five percent level construction plans, cost estimates and specifications for the town to review. Uh, we're expecting to see that. I think Randy, you said the end of next week, we should see something?
Yep.
Um, we will take that under advisement. We will see how much, how much it will cost to do the plan that he puts together versus how much funding we have left. And provide comments for Randy's team to put together final bit documents. We can start the process of putting these plans on the street. And the goal is to have wayfinding signage uh installed or the first phase of the wayfinding signage installed by the end of the year. Uh, and that's where we're at right now. If anybody has any questions, uh I'd be happy to take them. Yes, Connor?
Oh, Dottie is still muted. Dottie, could I just add a little bit of color to the? So, um, could you go back, Greg, to the, um, I think this is important, uh uh, no, to be actual to the membership here because we, uh, because of the COVID time warp, it feels like a long time ago. But for anyone watching, you know, when this came up as an opportunity through the Mass Works Grant uh to, to create some of the signage, it's something that DPW has noted for years, we, we don't have. Uh, this was actually something that was uh identified all the way back and the envisioned Easton master plan uh by those working groups of citizens as something that the community has wanted to see for quite some time, which is some sort of aesthetically unified uh wayfinding and signage to create a sense of place. And so that's why we had this uh very, 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 very large committee to make sure that we had a, a really good cross-section, like you said, of uh different perspectives and, and folks who are already on boards and committees and are committed uh to the community. Uh, and, you know, one of the things that I think is important about the signage, uh and, and Mark and Jen were obviously members too, but is, you know, you, there's a lot of design iteration that goes on where you can have something with a lot more kind of artistic flair and elements. But one of the really, really key things we wanted to make sure, that's why we had the Commission on Disabilities represented, is that these things are relatively legible, even when you're moving, uh and that the, the text is, and seraph, and that it's, it's, it's able to be uh discerned by folks, you know, of, of varying uh um, uh levels of sight and things like that to make sure that it, it's, it's helpful, right? We want it to look nice, but also to be, you know, aesthetically clean and easy for people to be able to find their way around. So, um, I just think that that's a very important piece that came out of this process, but I appreciate uh DPW's work and, and Beta and all, of course, of the large group of folks from all those committees who, who helped out.
Any comments from any of the board members? Mark?
I'm just very, I'd like to go back to the, to the different sign iterations, because I, I think some of these are fantastic. I, I think they're uh, they're really great ideas and, and I, I wanna thank everybody on the committee who's been involved in this and, and including the, the, the architect too, because um, I'm looking forward to seeing this in, in reality. And I thank Mark and Jen for representing so, the board.
So, uh, the only comments that I wanna make is, um, you know, when we go through this, you, you have, it's wayfinding. Um, so the, you know, the larger question for me was why do we even need wayfinding? And then like a little history of, you know, why we need it and, you know, the, the awareness that we're lacking it, um, that we don't have it. And uh, you know, when you enter into Easton, um, the only thing we have really identifiable in Easton, uh aside from black and orange, which is our, our high school colors, um, but those high school colors don't necessarily uh transfer over to the, the town colors. It's two different things. Um, and the only thing we have when you enter, when you know you're in Easton is, you know, the, the Easton signs incorporated seventeen twenty-five as you enter into the town from neighboring um areas. But you could be anywhere in town and you don't necessarily know you're in Easton because there's no uniformity of signage. There's nothing that tells you where you are. There's nothing that says historic downtown Easton. There's nothing that alerts you to, that you're entering into an economic zone. Um, whether it's five corners, whether it's uh downtown or whether it's queeset. Um, so with this, there's uniformity. Um, it's an economic driver as well. So you know when you're entering into an area, uh it has curbside appeal. Um, it is the um, i- if you've ever heard of the broken window effect, it's something that kind of um tries to reverse that and, and bring up an area. So, uh, in every way, this is good for the town. And, you know, the sooner we can see this in every area of town, the better. Obviously, we're, we're restrained by finances, but um, we've never had anything like this before. And this is, this is fantastic for the town. This is fantastic for the economic zones. And this group worked tremendously hard on this. Uh, and, you know, I'm, I'm glad to have been part of it and I'm, I'm really, really excited to see these signs around town.
Jen?
Yeah, it was actually just such a pleasure to be part of the committee, um, that, that kind of came to consensus on this. And um, I'll just echo what Mark said. It really was a fantastic group. Um, and it's very mindful. You know, we went down paths where we were kind of negotiating, rethinking. Um, you know, aesthetically this works, but wait a minute, this won't work for a certain population because of, you know, uh consideration that was raised. Um, and that was done very thoughtfully and mindfully and um, I think it led to a really solid process. And um, that was very attentive to detail. And as, you know, as both Mark and uh, and Craig and Connor have said, like the value of bringing this sort of thing to the community can't be understated. Um, it just goes very far to defining space and place. Um, you know, when you travel and you go to places that have this sort of signage, you remember those places. I'm thinking back as in terms of taking over the years and going to a place with good, like consistent signage and this, this kind of approached away finding it really mattered. Um, so I'm really excited for our community to be taking this on. Thank you to everybody involved.
Thanks, Jen. I have a couple of questions. Um, have, so this really, this group was tasked to come up with the design, but have, have, how are we gonna identify the locations for the signs? Is that the next phase or is that something that's already done or?
That's been done as part of the master plan, uh which I can be more than happy to share with you. I don't have, oh, actually, you know what? Hold on a second. Let me see if I can, if I do have it up. Um, oh, here we go. So can we see that, everybody? So that is the Town of Easton Wayfinding Master Plan. Two years ago, uh before, I think it was right before COVID hit, we had an intern go out and identify. We got traffic counts from OCPC and any, and this, and Mast DOT, identifying our high, what area, what roads are more traveled than others. Um, in addition to that, we also sent an intern out. She identified all of the signs in question uh around town. Um, you can see here, entering Easton, entering Easton, and you're gonna see a vast dichotomy of signs here and you can see how uh disjointed they are. And spent a week cataloging where all these signs were, uh using our, our GIS technologies.
That's really good. I, that, I wanna really look at that report because one of the things that I've noticed in, you know, certainly not in Easton, but other towns, there's, there's a lot of sign clutter. And so you could be driving, you know, there's certain signs, like even in Easton that I've driven by and haven't in years noticed them because they just, when you're driving, they kind of blend in and you're not really looking for them. So having that uniformity is really gonna uh make things pop, you know, it'll jump out at you. Uh, they, the ones that we want people to see. So I, I, I'm really looking forward to that as well. Um, what are the, what are the materials that they'll be? Are they gonna be wooden or uh?
Uh, the metal and wood, um, I think that's something Randy was working on and he's gonna present to us. He's gonna have recommendations. You know, obviously, some of our more predominant areas in town would get a nicer wooden sign. And then other areas will get metal signs. Um, but I, we, we had discussed that. He was, originally it was gonna be metal. Uh, I brought up the wood option and he was getting into it, so I'm looking forward to see that, what he's proposing as part of the, the plan set we'll see next week. And Randy, I don't know if you've gotten back with your team about that since you guys were working away on that today.
Oh, yeah. No, we've been discussing that, so um, I, I think you characterized it correctly, Greg. You know, somewhere, when you get into some of the more historic areas, so
What might be the welcome to Northeastern Village, for example, that sign, we're, we're designing it as a wood sign. Um, the, the things that we have to account for is, you know, an investment, investment like this. You know, making sure that it's, it's well done, it's high quality and durable. So that's part of what we'll be looking at.
Well, I wasn't directly on the committee, but I'm on the Commission for Disabilities and the Age Friendly Advisory Committee and. Um, the Commission on Disabilities spent a lot of time looking at this, and I was just really blown away by the, the thought process and. Um, you know, the discussion about that, and I think that that's why it's so important, you know, to have. A committee that reflects the makeup of all these boards and committees. Mark's looking at it through economic development perspective and. Jen's looking at it from, uh, you know, an environmental and, and design standard. Um, you know, the Commission on Disabilities and the Age Friendly Communities viewed it through their templates, so. I think you get the best results when you have a lot of eyes on it in that way, and I know that a lot of time was put into it and a lot of iterations, but I think. You know, just like the school building project, it finally reveals itself. Uh, so. You, you all did a tremendous job and thank you to everybody on that committee and all the staff that worked on that as well, and to you, Randy, and your team.
Thank you.
So, um, we don't, so we don't have to have a vote on this, so this was just for information only. And we thank you for being here with us tonight.
Of course. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Greg. Thanks, Dave.
So the next item on the, um. Agenda is discussion and a vote reviewing of the proposals for newly available section fifteen off-premises package store all alcohol liquor license. So, uh, this is just a deliberation amongst the board. I know the applicants are in the, um, attendees. But we're gonna be talking, we had the presentations at our last meeting. And just to refresh everybody's memory and the people at home, uh, we have, uh, uh, one all alcohol. Off-premise package store license, and we have one beer and wine. With those licenses were available due to the, um, change in our census. Did I say that wrong, Connor?
Uh, oh, I must, I was probably just, I didn't even know I did. No, sorry. That was correct.
So, um, we had asked, uh, for applications for an RFP to let us know. We're looking for the most advantageous, um, proposal for these. Now, we had two applicants that both want the all alcohol, and we only have one of those to be able to give. So I'm just going to run through some of the criteria that we had here. We asked the applicants, uh, or the proposals to include. The address, the building square footage, the available parking, lease agreements, expected traffic generation. And any other information and documentation about the location of the business. A detailed description of the type of business and which license they were seeking. Um, other types of sales and hours of operation. Ownership information and a detailed description of the applicant's experience in operating a package store license. How the business will create jobs, support the local economy, and support the town's economic and community development goals. What experience the applicant has had with safe service alcohol in a college community. And any other information that would help us make a decision to serve the public need. So we had, uh, two, two great presentations, and I'll just kick this off with my comments on it, um, what my thoughts were. So the two applicants were, um, hold on one second, let me just get the names proper here. Um, we had Raj Mayar Patel, and then we had Southeastern Corporation doing business as Sunny's Convenience. So to me, um, the, the group doing business as Sunny's Convenience. They have really, um, transformed, uh, a blighted strip mall that had been there for a while. Um, brought in four new tenants, which creates jobs. They support, they're, they brought in business that would support the other businesses there to make it really, um, a strong. Grouping of businesses, which is really important to have a strong anchor. And, um, they haven't had any complaints or compliance issues. I think that I'd, I just want to stop there, because I want the other board members. I don't want to steal everybody's information, you know, everybody's comments on it. But that's what I'm leading with. I think that, um, they have made a really great investment into the community. And I think that they've met all the criteria of what we were looking for. So I'm going to ask Craig, everyone in the order that we normally go. Craig speaks next, and then I'll wrap it up at the end and we'll take a vote. So Craig, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Dottie. Um, I, I concur that, um, I, I looked at it from an economic. Driver, I, and, and I saw over the, the years, the, the. What you, I think you called at one point a blighted, um, uh, strip mall down on, on Washington Street, um. That, um, this family has transformed it, um, putting in, I believe, about a quarter of a million dollars. Uh, and, and bringing in, um, uh, businesses to that, that area. Um, and, and I think that, um, that investment in this town is, is. Significant to me in terms of my decision as to whom, to whom I'm going to, uh, vote to, to award this, um, all alcohol beverage show. License.
Mark?
Yeah, much in the same vein. Uh, I, I, I saw what that family has done, uh, to the, to the strip mall. The amount of money they poured into it, uh, it tells me that they're investing in their properties, uh, that they're in, in buy, in. As a result, they're investing in Easton. Um, I thought their presentation was fantastic, what they submitted was fantastic. I think they have a proven track record. Uh, and, uh, from what I could see, they, um. I was very comfortable, uh, with supporting them, so that is where my support will also go.
Great, and Jen?
Uh, just very similar, much of the same. Um, I saw a lot of value that came from the investments that haven't been done already at that site. And the opportunity to expand that further and continue to, um, develop a space that has gone under this kind of. Uh, regeneration in recent years would be, you know, a big asset to the community.
Great, thank you. Well, I think it looks like we, we are all on the same page with this, and I do want to, um. Remind the board and the public that there is another beer and wine license available, so we can only select one of these two applicants. And, um, you know, if the applicant that is not awarded is always welcome to apply for the other license. Um, so Craig, if you want to make a motion?
So I move to award. The newly available section fifteen off-premises package store all alcohol liquor license to Southeastern. Corporation doing business as Sunny's Convenience, seven fifty Washington Street Southeast.
Oh, hold on one second.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, just, just to clarify, it's not awarding, it's, you're now, uh, inviting the applicant to submit the. Because we need to use the state's, uh, pre, uh, authorized application materials, so this was like the kind of proposal stage. Um, sorry, I should have clarified that first, but that, uh, you would be invite, uh, voting to invite them, uh, to submit their application.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
And full genetti, yes. And we thank, um, both of the, um, applicants for their proposals and. Um, we really are looking at this as an economic development driver. And we appreciate everyone that wants to do business in Easton, so thank you very much to, um, to both groups. So the next item on the agenda is the May sixteenth annual town meeting warrant review and the signing of the warrant. Um, we have Article Five for supplemental fiscal year twenty twenty-two budgets.
That's correct, Dottie. So, uh, this is the last night of warrant review, uh, and, uh, then two weeks, it's town meeting. Uh, Elizabeth sent us the final draft. The only changes to this, from what the board has seen and voted on, is. Uh, the addition of the details to Article Five, which is to supplement the fiscal twenty-two budget. Uh, and the deletion of one of the zoning articles relating to solar panel zoning, that's now off the warrant at the request of the planning board, so. Article Five, if you open the most recent draft that was emailed to you, it's on page three. Uh, and this, uh, it, it, the, the explanation is in the text. It's a transfer of one hundred and ninety thousand. For the following departments, select board two thousand for remote meeting access fees that were previously paid out of cares. Uh, two thousand in accounting, town accountant, uh, budget for training costs. Seventy thousand in police for additional overtime costs associated with, uh, long-term IODs as well as. Uh, multiple military deployments of our current officers. Sixteen thousand for inspectional services due to increased inspection volume, uh, as we, we touched on, I believe, last week. Uh, you know, they're doing, uh, fifteen to twenty-five percent more permit activity, so that we need an increase there to absorb that cost. Uh, for the inspections, and then for DPW, seventy-five thousand for the snow and ice deficit. So we had alluded to earlier in the year, rather than carry or amortize the snow and ice deficit into next year's budget, that we would address it. Uh, by supplementing this year, so that's what this is. And twenty-five thousand for increased overtime costs, uh, for the department. So, uh, the net there is one ninety. This would be funded out of available, uh, free cash and other unspent funds.
So, uh, can we get a motion? So we already made a motion to include, so we need a motion to recommend Article Five?
Yes, please.
I move to, uh, recommend Article Five.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. And do we need a motion to sign, uh, sign the warrant?
Yeah, it, it's, yes, it's ceremonial, but, uh, it's been our practice for many years, so board, uh, will be so willing, just a motion to, uh, sign, uh, the final warrant.
I move that we approve the, the, to sign the, the warrant.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Terrific. Uh, next is the acceptance of the minutes of April twenty-fifth.
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger, Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
AC, yes.
You have town administrator notes?
I have none prepared.
None here? And, um, select board notes. Craig?
I, I just wanted to thank the members of the, uh, the wayfinding, uh, committee, because I'm very impressed with, uh. With what, what you guys did and, and, uh, I'm, I'm really excited to look forward to, uh, seeing it, um, come to fruition.
Thanks. Mark?
No comments tonight.
Jen?
Yes, actually, I have a bigger one tonight. Um, so. The Affordable Housing Trust has been, um, very actively bringing along with, um, efforts in support of the Housing Production Plan. And I just wanted to share a timeline of some significant dates and actions, um, and, and. Kind of lead up to what will be happening. I think as everyone knows, the Housing Production Plan is, um. An important element of our forty-B regulatory process and make sure that we have a strategic plan, a very proactive approach to thinking about affordable housing in our community. Um, and if you go online, there's a ton of fantastic resources and even old plans are available, when you can. Um, literally Google Housing Production Plan Massachusetts and, and, you know, you're reading to your heart's content. Um, so we have been going through the process of, of, um. Getting the community there with, uh, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust over the past several months with the Old Colony Planning. Um, group who is helping us with the process. Uh, so some notable dates, we were busy on the twenty-fifth, but that during that night. Um, there was a product, presentation to the planning board. Um, on May ninth, the planning board will discuss and provide comments on that plan that was presented. Um, and on May nineteenth, there's a really important Affordable Housing Trust monthly meeting. Uh, which will be an opportunity for public feedback, um, on the plan. So, um, I will, it would be fantastic if members of this board and any members of the public who are interested in participating are, um, in attendance. For that really important meeting. Um, and please tell your friends and any interested parties, um, to be there and, and share their. Have their voice be heard in this regard. On May twenty-third, um, there's the anticipated, um, planning board vote to adopt the Housing Production Plan. And on June fourteenth, um, we anticipate there'll be a presentation to the select board. Um, and possibly a vote to, um, accept it if, if we are applicable proceeding. Um, so again, the most important date for our group is if we can, uh, be in attendance and, and. Push attendance and promote attendance for the Affordable Housing Trust meeting on the nineteenth. That would be a huge, um, value add. For the work that's been done. Um, and any questions on, on that?
No, I think that's, that's great, Jen, and, and we can, uh, get that information through all our normal channels that we, we push out to the public. And, um, I, I'm happy to help you with that as well.
Fantastic. Thank you. The other thing I'll say is, um, the town did a great job on Sunday with the. Eastern, um, baseball, uh, youth league baseball group with the, the parade through town. My son was in this first parade, was very excited. Um, and it was very well managed and, and the kids had a great time. Um, and the events after it is wonderful, so. Um, thank you to all involved in that. I know a lot of folks with town helped facilitate that happening. Um, so, thank you.
That's terrific. So I don't have anything myself tonight. I was just gonna, oh, okay. Connor?
All right, I do have the license application that we need to go back to.
I was gonna bring that up, the Lions web license application.
Yeah, so, um, I interrupted you and I apologize. So Dottie, why don't you close, if you, you want to close out notes, then we'll go back for a, a license.
So I was just gonna say I didn't have any notes for tonight, so we'll skip right back to that.
So, uh. Uh, so Elizabeth, back to item seven, just for minutes purposes, so, uh. So the application is for eleven to eight. Uh, at the risk of there being some arcane rule regarding the handling of alcohol, which. We are Massachusetts after all. I, I think it's probably safest to just go with what the application is. The standard, the board is typically. Uh, employed is that with Stonehill, because they do have li- uh, alcohol license on campus and their police force, that, that we usually don't have their applicant come in. Um, so I, I apologize, we don't have more information there, but that is what they requested, uh, when this was filed, uh, back. In the earlier, in April.
I, I, um, I don't have a problem awarding it from eleven to eight. Uh, if there's, if there's no guests there till five thirty, it's kind of a moot point.
Just for what it's worth, uh, the event goes till about nine, just throwing that out there. Looking at the invitation, it starts at five thirty through six thirty. At eight thirty, there's an auction finale, so it, it will. Go past eight, just throwing it out there. Suppose we can amend it in an emergency meeting, uh, within, you know, if they have a problem with it between, you know, what it is now. But I got, what I'm suggesting is just go, go with it how it is written now. If they have a problem with it, we can, you know.
I, selfishly, I really don't want to call an extra meeting between now and town meeting. Um.
Uh, good point.
Your third meeting in six business days, so if, if that, Mark, you are right, I think, I mean, they. They have indicated, what, five thirty to, to nine thirty, did you say?
Uh, I, I mean, at eight thirty is the last event, which means that it'll continue past eight thirty. I don't think they, yeah.
Um, so again, I, I'm showing that I've been lucky to have Michael here for many, many years. I haven't gotten that involved in the intricacies of these, but I, I would. Uh, I'd recommend, uh, you know, the board considering extending that end time to nine thirty, just. It, but it's up to you, Dottie. If you want to call another meeting, we can, um.
I don't want to call another meeting, and I, I'm sure it's an oversight on that as well, so I would do the game time at, uh. At nine thirty as well. We have the regulatory authority, right, to, to name. Or modify any of these if we want to, I would imagine.
I would, yes, you're the licensing authority.
Right.
I would just hate it for, I mean, they, they, this is their big event. It's at Stonehill College. It's a three-course meal. It's really, they went above and beyond to plan this. Um, and to not, to. I think it would upset them if they, if, if people were like, if it didn't go through the entire event, that's all.
Well taken, Mark. So I move to approve the, uh, Stonehill College. Request for. May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. From five PM to, from, from eleven AM to nine thirty PM.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Uh, Dottie, your computer lagged for about twelve seconds.
Apology. Okay, if there's no other comments or questions, um, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Bodger. So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Full Janetti, yes. Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Thank you.
You.